Okay, back in session.
Oh, there's your question.
Alright, so the first book.
No, 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 no.
There we have more comments.
Oh, more comments, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Hi, I'm representing the STAR committee. And unbeknownst to me, Randy Corona, ninth grade English teacher, had her ninth graders write paragraphs about their first day at STAR. So I walked into my room and I saw these papers on my desk and I didn't know what they were until I read them. So I just wanted to share with the board what the freshmen had to say, positive and negative about day one. And this is, like, names are blocked out, but I thought I would share some, you know, some of them are, some of them, you know.
Okay, great.
This is like, this is, so, that's it.
I think it has feedback.
It's just feedback, completely both ways, not going one way.
Great.
Okay. We got one more, so maybe I'll give this to you. That's it?
Okay, thank you.
And that's your leader.
Patty Prime.
Hi, Patty Prime, science teacher, high school. I just had a couple questions about the scheduling committee and if it has been formed.
No.
Not completely, okay, just was wondering. And just wanted to make sure that it was representative of all the content areas and maybe age groups too. That's it.
Okay, so the answer is, I'm just finishing that up. We're waiting for a couple of student names. And then we'll notify everybody. And the answer is yes, all content areas will be represented by at least a person. And it is a very diverse, experienced-based group.
Okay, thank you.
And all the names will be released as soon as I have, as soon as we just finalize the student.
Alright, thank you.
Board and parents too, yep. Board and parents too, board, students, teachers, parents.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So the first point on the regular agenda is the capital project date. Take it away.
Thanks. Are we on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
I got it.
So is that warming up? You're good, I'm just gonna...
I was going to join you in here.
Thanks. Put some big docs out. So this is the set of drawings for the project that was recently submitted to SED. And this tells the contractors what has to happen in the project. And this is the project manual that accompanies it. There's some bidding documents here and technical specs. And this is the how. So if this says put in gypsum board walls, this says use these kind of screws at this many inches on center. So that's your whole package that went to SED. And is this is warming up?
The molding quiz done, have you?
No, 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 no. But I wanted to let you know what size it's about.
It's still warming up.
It's still, does it still warm up?
I can hear it. You're okay, sure. So we'll go through the same process that we normally go through.
Can I just suggest that we turn off all the lights and everything?
Sure. Is that okay?
Yeah.
We'll go through the same format that we've gone through in the past so that it's familiar with you. And we're just gonna talk about schedule, project scope, the budget, and what's gonna happen next. And if you guys have any questions, we can open up the questions. So, schedule. I don't know if you remember when we talked originally, we decided to split the project into two because we hoped to bid the track and field project so that they could have summer construction. But SED wasn't cooperative and they didn't get the project approved in time for us to bid that and have construction in the summer of eighteen. So this project, we just received comments, we can have two weeks ago maybe, from our third-party reviewers. We're planning on addressing those by Friday the fifth of October. And I think that we'll have final approval on the project somewhere by the end of October, roughly, we'll say Halloween. And once that's approved, then we're gonna combine that set of drawings and specs with the drawings and specs that represent the track project. And we'll bid everything all as one package. That'll happen December through mid-January, roughly. So early December, the project will go out on the street. We'll call contractors that we think will be interested and that are good contractors. And we'll tell them that we're taking bids mid-January. And come mid-January, we'll be able to come back to you and say, hey, this is who we think we should award the project to for this amount of money. After the project is awarded, probably beginning of February-ish, that gives the contractor some time to put their quality packages together. They send us documentation that says, I'm really gonna use what you asked me to use or hey, I want to use something a little bit different. We review that and say, yes, that's great. You're, great that you're using what you, we asked you to use or maybe you just wanted to think about what you propose as a substitution. So we go through that process. And that allows materials that have long lead times that require ten, twelve weeks of purchase time to be on-site for summer construction. And we expect that construction will be roughly March, April-ish through September, October, October nineteenth. So that's the scheduled part and that's what it looks like in graphic format. So we're securing our building permit. That's what the SED process is about. We expect that that'll happen by Halloween. We'll go out to bid, oops, sorry, I forgot to show them this, December through mid-January. Then we'll come back to rewarding the contracts, mobilize, and go through construction. And just as a quick reminder, track project, new field events, new resurfing, new surface on the existing track, including D zones and escape pitches. Quick floor plan update of the elementary school secure vestibule. We've expanded the size of the vestibule so that there's some, the ability to staff people in there if they have to wait before they come into the building. There's a transaction window if somebody forgets their sneakers or their lunch. So small items can be passed through, kind of like in a bank. And the ability to talk through a window here feeds into a separate zone of the main office.
Eric, just before you get off there, so someone will have to come through the office to get into the building now.
Correct, so this is the main office and this is sort of the receiving or, you know, the security part. Somebody will walk through here and out into the, they'll have to be buzzed in. So that helps protect people behind the wall.
So the doors that go to the foyer are one-way opens?
Always open. Generally always locked during school hours. Buzzed in.
But safety for exit?
Correct, yeah, yeah, if there's a problem, everybody can avoid you. And you'll see that similar approach for all the vestibules. And then that three-dimensional picture, you can see that transaction window, the speaker box through the window, the ability to see people that are in the vestibule so you can monitor what's going on in the vestibule, and the doors to the corridor. These colors aren't correct because we haven't finalized our color selection yet. So it's just sort of tones of gray and wood tone. But it gives you an idea of what the space is gonna look like.
Will there be any benches in there for people to sit on?
Um, no, we're not planning on, if we do decide that we want benches in there, we have to build them in because I can't have loose benches in an undergrad school.
Well, there are now though.
Okay.
There are some benches against the wall for the parents that are coming and waiting for kids or something.
Alright, so we'll look at...
In the actual foyer.
We'll look at, build them those back in. Okay. Middle school entrance, very similar, but as we've talked about in the past, middle school, main office moves up to what I'm calling the front of that part of the building. The canopy's up this way, the parking lot's further down. Walk into the secure vestibule, a little bit of waiting room, get buzzed into the main office, and then out into the school. And then that's gonna look a little bit like this next picture.
And that'll be on the left side as you go on the right side.
As you walk in, so as you walk in, the outside doors, the main office is on the right.
Can you go back again, please?
Sure. Canopy. Walk in the main doors from the outside.
So that the canopy... I don't remember, is the door recessed like that now or are you...
It hasn't, we haven't changed anything at the outside of the building except we have added windows onto the outside to help monitor the parking lot.
And there are classrooms on the left side that you just not showed.
Correct, correct, yeah. These classrooms. Yep. So that image from inside the hallway, again, door into the main office, transaction window, speaker that kind of that communication. And then if we go one more picture? This is what it would look like from in the main office looking out towards the secure vestibule. This is the door in and then back out into the corridor.
And that door in is a buzz-in, right? It's not a...
Correct. Yep. Okay. So then real quick, highlights, some roof replacement over the knowledge corridor connector, over the sixth-grade wing.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
On the, if you were coming into the building, the one that exits back into the building, how does that door lock work?
Can we go back to the floor plan?
So the back, the, the door furthest back thing?
This one here?
Yes, how does the lock work on that?
That's just gonna be a normal communicating lock. And so it's an office passage lock.
So it's, it'll be open all the time?
It would be open all the time, correct. Yep. Yeah. Doors locked, doors open. Yeah, so if a teacher or student comes to the main office, they have clear access there. Yep. Thanks. High school, very similar approach, but because we had some interesting geometries, we came up with a solution that I think can work with what we have or works well with what we have. So here's the big picture, first floor of the high school, atrium, just the main office area. And then here's the vestibule. This stays pretty much the same except what we've done is opened up this part of the wall and extended the window wall of the doors. You're gonna see that in the picture in a minute. A very similar approach. So as you enter into, this is always open. Walk into the vestibule, transaction window, speaker, locked door. Once you get buzzed in, you come into the main office, similar to what you do today, and then back out into the school.
So is that lower wall, is that coming into the current, no, the next one down.
Yep.
Is that one coming into the current space?
Correct, this does not exist right now. So this wall goes all the way to here.
Okay.
Yep.
So would that shrink the space of that...
Correct. But we tried to do it sensitively so what's there? And you'll see in a couple pictures here. So this is what it looks like as you walk right into those front doors and to the left is the main office. If you go to the next one, hey. This is what it looks like from further back in the atrium. You can see existing, no. And then this is, once you get closer to the...
I have a general question. All this glass, I like it that it's visible and all of it gives you the air feel. But what type of, is that special glass? What type of protection are you having on that?
So all the glass is protected glass. I don't wanna go into the details in public because it's something that only a few people should know about. But yes, it got the school protected.
Okay.
And I'm happy to talk to you after this one. Thanks. And then just the long list of items that, I don't have specific images to show you, but we're doing video cameras around the campus, access control, which means door buzzers and key fobs to not only upgrade what's on the outside of the building today, but to also augment what we have today so that all the interior classrooms at both the high school and the eastel have a card reader system on the classroom doors. And that allows the school to come, to go into a lockdown situation automatically. It doesn't mean that it's relying on a person to lock that door. And there's always gonna be the ability for somebody to let somebody in if there's an emergency.
Is that centrally controlled in the office?
It's centrally controlled.
And they're normally unlocked?
Well, it can be normally unlocked or it can be locked. It's up to you and I think it's just a policy decision that can talk through. My suggestion would be locked all the time to make it faster if there is an event. And then if somebody needs a pass to go to the bathroom, you actually give them a card so that they can wave themselves back into the classroom or any classroom if they need to, if there is something. That way it's sort of fail-safe. Other stuff that's happening? Any questions?
No, just a mental note.
Sure, no problem. So at the eastel, the great room floor tiles are being replaced with a nice rubber tile. And then if budgeting permits, we've got the water heating, the solar water heating for the knowledge pool, the knowledge gym air handling units and air handling unit for nurses area. We thought that the knowledge gym heating unit or ventilation and the nurses ventilation may be SED point of contention when we went out. So we put it in, but budgets are tight, you guys will see in a little bit. So we made it an alternate and it would be an add alternate. I prefer to propose add alternates at the time of bid because I think that the district gets the best value when scope items are bid as adds. If you bid it as a deduct, that means it's in the base bid and it gets removed. And I think that contractors typically keep some of the value in their pocket as a deduct. So I think you get the best value as a add.
Question?
Sure.
On, on those items?
Yep.
As the budget comes to bear?
Yep.
And I think I would make the request that we know what those budget items are and what the potential impact of the district is so that we can make our own decisions even if there's not budget in the budget.
Yeah, you will. And the reason is, or the mechanism that you'll get is we'll get a base bid amount and then you'll get a menu of all these add alternate items with a value for each add alternate. And you as a board will be able to decide, do I wanna include that or not wanna include that with the project if we've got the money to do it. I'm hoping that my guess about tariffs and what's happening in the market today doesn't come to fruition and we've got extra money to be able to put towards scope items, so these add alternates. But right now I'm hedging my bets and being conservative and saying to you, let's put these on as menu items à la carte if there's money to do it. And even if we can't award an add alternate at the time of bid, the benefit for the school district is that SED allows an add alternate to be added on to any, to any project at any time afterwards if the contractor holds that number because it was competitively bid and they don't think that it's an item that needs to go out for another bid afterwards. So that's the real benefit to doing it that way too. Thanks, Patty. Money?
One, one second.
Sure.
Please, you talked about the doors for the middle and the high school.
Yep.
Can you give us a snapshot overview of what happens with the doors during winter?
Uh, it's eastel complex, everything.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I almost misspoke. Okay. So when we're talking about dollars, these are the dollars that added up to the referendum amount. But when we do our estimates, we only look at construction dollars. So I have to add things on to the bottom line to make this compare to this. Red is bad, green is good. So I'll walk you through where we are. This is the funding for the project. And ultimately what we're doing is comparing our bottom-line estimate to our bottom-line referendum amount. So that's why this is over with red. But after we subtract out those add alternate items, this is the value of those potential and this is the list. Okay, for the go. So to make things clear, you can compare the dollars, building to building as we go through, construction dollars. These dollars include a contingency at the time of bid. Because of tariffs, things have gone up drastically from January to today. We've seen some prices in Western New York for general contractors go up thirty percent. So I've got a five percent contingency built into the construction estimates on top of what I feel are conservative estimates already. And then we have a construction contingency set aside for anything that might happen during the project as a whole aside so that if a change order comes up, you've got money to pay for that. More asbestos, find a column in the middle of the door that we weren't expecting to be there. There's money set aside. So includes contingency to cover bidding issues, extra money unforeseen since construction. That totals up to here. And when I add on the incidental allowance, pay for architect, pay for testing, pay for overtime during the project, project insurance, all that kind of stuff. It totaled up to the six point three million dollars. And that compares to the project cost at the referendum. To the referendum amount, we're taking a little bit of smart school bond act money and hoping to use that to pay for the cameras and get some extra work done that's related to safety. So the total value of funding is five point three roughly compared to six point three. That whole list of alternates that we talked about, and I can get you this list separately, totaled up to about a million fifty thousand dollars, which brings us back to the budget. So that five point two eight five compares to the five point two six. I'd like to continue to look a little bit to see if I can find a little bit more. I don't wanna be that close at the time of bid, so I might come up with another suggestion between now and when we go out to bid. But I'll make sure everybody knows that, that potential items.
Eric, two, two questions. One is, the incidental allowance, does that include the construction management?
Yep, there's money in there for that too.
And you said you were adding the five percent fudge on that for the effective tariffs or whatever?
In here.
And if it went up to thirty percent, then we'd be in trouble, is that right?
The thirty percent that I saw was only on the general construction side of things, which represents about forty, actually less, maybe thirty percent of your project. So it's not the total project. MEP, mechanical electrical plumbing bids have stayed where we've expected them to be. So that, and it makes sense. The steel, impact on tariffs of steel hasn't really affected air handling units yet. But it has affected people that buy steel from Canada to, you know, that are in the shape of columns or beams and that kind of stuff. So that's kind of what we've seen. And it has only been Western New York. But on top of that, I think that there's gonna be a lot, a lot of projects that bid between today and when we're out to bid. I see that happening in October and November. And that's the other reason I'm picking December. I wanna make sure that we've got a clear window to bid. And I think that we're gonna get good numbers because we're bidding in December.
So it's a five percent buffer built in the top set of numbers?
Correct.
And then seven and a half percent built in for the contingency?
Correct.
So you've got about...
It's about two hundred and fifty thousand here.
About six hundred thousand, I was gonna say set to the side.
Yep, yep.
So roughly about ten percent of the project.
Yeah. So I feel if this number has to get adjusted down a little bit, if we went in with a little bit lower contingency, closer to five percent because of the type of work that we're doing, I wouldn't feel uncomfortable with that. Because we're not doing additions, we're not doing things that are really reconfiguring the building. The biggest piece of work is moving the main office and middle school.
I know you said you'd give us that list. When we get that list of the alternate, I forget what you called them.
Add alternates, yep.
Add alternates, sorry. Um, can we also have the macro budget associated with each, with each of those, please? And just some idea of what the scope for each of those are?
Sure.
Pan and hardware for high school. Okay, what is that? Is that every exit door, you know? Just give us an idea of scope.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. Excellent. So what's left to do? We have to finish out addressing SED comments for the phase two submission. Like I said, we're having our comments back to the reviewer by October the fifth. And I think we'll have everything ironed out by the end of the month, which allows us to go to bid in that sort of same timeframe that we talked about. That's the big picture. There's some meetings I have to do with the district on colors, furniture, and those furniture budget is included in that incidental allowance. And we have to decide on how we're gonna approach construction oversight. We'll be doing that as a team as well.
Any questions?
One more.
Yeah.
This is really pointing more towards you, I think, this committee. The roof work that's in there, does that solve all of the existing roof issues that we have?
All of them.
Major, there's minor leaks here and there that we will, they're actually addressed here at the high school. With some repairs.
Yep.
And then when we did the roof scan, we found a couple of areas that are unaddressed in the project. But otherwise, yeah, it pretty much does. I mean, you're always finding a minor one here and there.
No, I understand.
Definitely patch, but yes, it takes care of all.
So yeah, I don't know if you knew, the district had foresight to undertake a roof scan, which uses infrared technology to find out where there's wet insulation. You go up on a night actually like this where it's been warm in the building and it's a cooler evening and you can see where heat is escaping through the roof more quickly than other areas where it's staying. So it identified a couple of small areas where high walls meet low roof on the high, on this building, where there's a little bit of potential wet insulation. So other than the molding patch on the back, it's that we'll get it addressed over time.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Anytime. I'm gonna steal these back. They're in the back of my car, if you want them.
Okay, so the next point on the agenda is band trip. Want music? Just gonna talk.
The mariachi band.
Very good, very good.
Alright, hi, I'm Eric Elliott, the high school band treasurer. And on behalf of the band, we'd like to request permission to go to Hershey Park from May seventeenth to May nineteenth as our band trip this year. And ask it over to you. And we would like to go to this band trip because it's an opportunity to see a newer part of our country. And we learn from performance from judges' feedback.
So I could just introduce yourself?
No, I'm Connor, I'm a big guy.
Hi, I'm Trevor Howard. And some more good things is that it's a good opportunity to play at a higher level because the judges are college band directors and they will have the music right in front of them and will tell when we're playing the right stuff, if we have mistakes and whatever. And also, it is a great bonding experience for the students. And I know that those few people that I didn't talk to that I'm now good friends with through the band trip.
That's, that's pretty much it. They got to the crux of the idea. This is, uh, would be my eleventh band trip, I believe. Started back in nineteen ninety-nine. I am very proud to say they have all been a wonderful success. Each one seems to get better than the last one through different experiences. And going along with what Trevor said, the performance standard is definitely elevated during these years because playing for mom and dad is one thing, but playing for a college professor who has everybody's part in front of them during the performance is, is another thing. But it does help us to improve because after the performance, we get a recorded commentary by the judge. So as our performance is going on, it's a little bit of an unusual experience because the band's on stage and there's almost nobody in the audience. And these two adjudicators are in the back of the hall talking quietly into their microphone and saying, gee, you did that really well. And maybe you wanna try to improve the intonation at this point. Constantly giving us suggestions. There's also some written comments and we get graded on the performance. So we are compared to other schools that participate in the competition. Coming in first place is always a wonderful thing. We did manage to do that once. But what we're really striving for is the rating aspect of it. We wanna get a superior rating because the judges don't just give that out. We have to earn so many points based on the interpretation of the music, the quality of the performance, the musicianship, the blend of the sound. All aspects of the performance are evaluated.
Any questions?
So roughly, how many kids do you think you would be taking?
Currently in the high school daily, we have sixty-five students. The cost per student, which by the way, I tried to give you guys a copy. I tried to make copies tonight of the itinerary, but the copier was doing something really bizarre. So I will make sure, I will go upstairs and get other copies and get them to you this evening before you go home. So the cost per student is four... So the cost per student is four hundred and forty dollars. We have sixty-five students in the band. It's my goal always to get every student to go on the trip. I also include maybe three to four students who are in eighth grade to help boost some of the instrumental sections. Like, for example, this year, I don't have as many flute players in the high school that I would like to have. And I have a particularly strong flute player in eighth grade that I would ask to bring along likewise in the trombone, but I've already been in communication with those parents. And then when it comes to rooming, I try to put those students into a good room with older students where they won't be intimidated or bullied or feel out of place, you know, they'll be very welcome to the instrument.
Any questions?
What type of fundraising do you have planned?
Well, so far, we've already done the mum sale, which we just concluded this week. We're planning to do a poinsettia sale, frozen cookie dough. Those are the current ones that we have planned, and we may do some other ones in addition to that. I will say that I've never had a student not go on a trip due to their financial status. I will find ways to bring every student who wants to go. Some students just do not feel comfortable leaving Canada or Harry. That's fine, but that's, they're making that, that choice.
So the four hundred and forty dollar per student, is that after fundraising or before fundraising?
That is before fundraising. And I should also say, I would like to, I believe we had talked about this in the past year, about transportation. The total cost for transportation for this particular trip is seven thousand two hundred dollars. Now, I'm not expecting the school district to pay for all of that, that is a very large bill, but assistance with that, because we are a class, would be greatly appreciated and would help us with the funding of the trip as well.
Is that included in your four forty or?
Yes, right, right now, the seven, the seven, that is included.
And what do you, what are you hoping or projecting to make off of your fundraising for the whole?
Well, a lot of the fundraising is going to be dependent on each individual student's effort. So, for example, the mum fundraiser and the frozen cookie dough fundraiser, whatever a student sells, I'm going to apply directly to that student account. To me, that seems to be the most fair way to do it because some people, some people are content just to pay everything. I can only say, I don't want to buy any flowers, I don't want to buy any cookie dough, just tell me how much it is and we'll, we'll finish it. So obviously, I would like to raise as much as possible, so if anybody knows anything that you don't, that would be fantastic.
I think also, as you know, on last year, we did pass a resolution that we would pay under a part of the transportation for our trips, and we will let you know now that we have some of the figures. We need to know one of things, mileage to Hershey?
Okay.
And then we could calculate what our, you know, based on that resolution, what our contribution will be.
Sure.
So you can modify your fundraising.
Yep, yep. I appreciate that, thank you.
Assuming we include it. Okay, um, do I have any more questions? Do I have any motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, staying? And we're going for a trip.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, the next one is the Mohawk solar project. Okay, so, um, basically, the status at this point is that we had a presentation from the solar project last meeting, which we did send those pictures that gave some feeling for what it would look like, install, obviously not exactly, don't give a sense of it. Apparently, there are five entities, as we were told, including ourselves. We are kind of a major entity because the majority of the solar panels will be in the Candary School District. And so apparently, the other four entities are all on board with it, but they're kind of waiting for us to make a decision before they'll proceed with it. And the, as you know, the IDC's approach is that unless all five entities agree, they will not proceed. So, and the question is, are there any questions or any...
Is he also going to ask for it? Yeah.
I noticed an opportunity to speak with one of the partners, happens to be the fellow where the power panel is, and he explained how he's been treated, how the thought process of not having the solar panels absolutely everywhere by the road, and this will allow this family that's formed their own lives to clearly retire or something. And also keep, so, so people can own their land too far, the best part of their land too far. And after that conversation, understanding that part, I think it's great.
I'd just like to share a couple of other things. So one is that they are definitely prepared to go forward with installing a solar installation at the school, which can use both to generate electricity most of the time and teaching. The other thing we're exploring with them, and I've already reached out to them, is to have an internship program that will help have our students actually intern on the project that's being built, so they can learn a skill that would be valuable and applicable to them should they decide they want to go into the workforce at high school. So that's, to me, is very exciting and promising as well. Any other questions? So do you have a motion?
I think a motion that would move forward with approving this plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, staying? Okay, thank you. Community meeting. Okay, so we have discussed a couple of times about having a community meeting to talk about the ELAMF standard testing, the three through eight, as we all know, there's been a significant absten, abstention of, you know, rate of... Opta, thank you, I couldn't remember the word, in our district, and, you know, we wanted to really have a chance to have a conversation with our constituents, students and, and the parents as well, to go over their concerns and to make sure that we're all up to speed and on the same page in terms of what the facts of the matter are at this point, and to address concerns that parents may raise. So the, I think we all agree that it would be a good idea, the real issue now is wet. So I guess I would turf that to...
What time of the year are we looking for?
Well, that's, I would, I would turf that to Mrs. Gribshaw, because she has a better sense of our schedule.
I think last time, we did, we held it as the second board meeting of the month, didn't it? Pretty sure. Was it the fall? I couldn't remember what season it was.
It was the last. Yeah, it was the second meeting of our school.
Well, with that...
Well, I'm just thinking, I don't know what, just as an educator, if we want students and parents to understand what's happening, that maybe we should do this in the spring before the testing, so this way things are fresher to find. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, February, March, somewhere around, but I don't know.
The test starts?
I don't even know when the test starts, and I should, because I have to...
So...
It's February, we've got February break in there. Yeah, I would do it after February break. Which is my...
So then the second meeting in March?
First week of April and first week of May.
So if we have the second meeting in March?
Maybe at first.
That'd be the twenty-eighth, and then test the next week.
Yeah, I would do it.
So we want to do the middle of March?
Beginning, middle.
What if we just reversed our meetings then? And we did, we held this on fourteenth of March, and then held our first meeting on the twenty, to do a business.
I just think the timing is important.
All right, so let's tentatively go with that. We have it on the fourteenth of March, and then we'll have the first meeting of the month on the twenty-eighth, so I'll write it to it.
Just one additional piece of information for the board. Board of Regents met this week. They previously had put in that school districts with low participation rates have to implement a participation rate, participation rate improvement plan. At the Board of Regents meeting earlier this week, they walked that back a little bit. So they have redone the requirement that it would only apply to those accountability groups that perform at a level one or two, so it's the, the schools in the bottom half of the state. So that's just something they have changed. So while the, it's still valuable, one of the concerns we had, quite frankly, was that we were going to be required to do a participation rate improvement plan. It does not look like we would be in that position.
No.
Yet. Further, the, the three through eight assessment scores were just released the other day, so in October, we'll, we'll come back with suggesting that we do a little presentation on our performance levels in October, so that they just were released. Okay? So just a couple of extra things.
So that agreed basically to have it live for you?
We have a time, six o'clock, five thirty, six thirty.
I think we did five thirty last time. I think we should do it for dessert. Is it my day I'm talking? I'm serious, you're going to get more people going?
Okay. My day, I like it. I'll even come.
The godlike ones go on.
Everybody's all excited about it.
If you want more participation, give them a flag and give them a raise.
Yeah, last time we did spaghetti dinner.
Yeah, I also think it might be good if we had, like, or somebody do like a babysitting thing, like our...
All this we did last time, so we'll just repeat, but, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we did all of that, so just get those plans back.
We refine this out, we can add to it. Moving right along, the next point on the agenda, superintendent evaluation. So there's a few things I would like to throw out. First, I think we should try to pick a date. And what I'd like to propose as the procedure is that everyone fills out as superintendent evaluation, except for you.
Right.
Which Rachel has already filled out, apparently. I would ask, my suggestion is that you'll turn them in either by email to me or in the office, that I can then pick them up prior to the meeting, and I will collate them all as I did the last time, and then we will have a meeting where we can discuss what the consensus ratings are in the different areas, and then after that, we'll schedule the meeting with Debbie to, to go over the results. So if, does anyone have any suggestions or other ideas about how to proceed?
No, I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so first, so let's pick a date, and then we need to get them to be at least a few days prior to that.
You don't want it like that, do you?
Yep, now, just for your information, the self eval, the self, the copies that we have on the sidebar have Debbie's self evaluation, which I didn't realize until I was informed about it. So it's all there in all the copies that we have.
Is that emailed to us?
No, we got, we got hard copies in there. If you don't have it, you can get more. So we did receive hard copies of it. I know, I, I gave them out.
It's a, it's a misperform.
So what month in the whole history are we act over then?
What? No, it wasn't a book, it was a, it was a, it was a, it was a thing like this, which just sits due, superintendent. It wasn't misperform, like I said, the sidebar in each area had Debbie's self evaluation. Yep, that's it. And you should see on the sidebar there, you see? And so if you don't have it, please let, let Patty know, and she can get you a copy of it, okay? And so let's pick a date, and then we'll pick a deadline by which you should have it to, to me or to Debbie's time. So let's go into October.
I think last time we did that at the second meeting.
Yep. So how about Wednesday, October tenth?
Yeah.
No? Tuesday, October ninth?
Say that one time, one more time, you said October s...
Ninth.
Tuesday, October ninth at six.
Yep, that's what we're going to leave.
Yep.
Would you like me to help you with the putting things together since you're not based on that committee? Just so, would you like, since I'm on that committee with you, would you like me to help you compile it?
Sure.
I think the suggestion is to have her come so that she goes through the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we still want you there.
Yeah, yeah. But I didn't know if you didn't help.
Sure, I'd like to.
Six o'clock into November two?
Yeah. And so I would ask that the, that your completed forms be either Patty's office or to me electronically by Friday, October the fifth, so that I have time to go see them with Jim and go take a colleague.
How about a little bit earlier? That's a long weekend, and... Yeah, just thinking. It's a parent weekend, I know, it could be a... But then we're already too close next week.
Well, I, I mean, I could, so why don't we just go in with Friday, fifth? I don't know, I'll be around that weekend and... So is that a real one, everyone? You think you can?
Yep.
Friday, fifth? Okay, so that's, is that settled?
It's Friday.
So we fixed it all. Okay, very good.
Are you reaching out to Rachel?
I, she already has it, but I sent her.
I'll need the date.
Oh, no, I haven't reached out yet, because I didn't have the date.
But I said, are you going to?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, next thing on the agenda is the student presenting report. And, um, excuse me for just a minute, I have to call to close and let them know that we came.
I can, I can. He's here, he's actually here. As he said, he's essentially... He's on in the hallway.
Oh, really? Sneaky.
He just misses the board meetings and nothing.
He's not helping the board meetings.
Okay, so moving right ahead, we're up to the student report. Take it away, you're looking.
So I went around to classrooms again to gather concerns, and this one's actually from a teacher, but the school tool app that they use to mark kids absent or there needs a way to mark kids for lessons because they have to just mark them as absent, and then it just causes problems later in the day, like, why were they here late when they really weren't? They just had a sixth lesson? So I don't know how to fix that, if someone, a teacher just wanted me to address that.
Can I just say, just on some of these issues, since you're good enough to get them in ahead of time, you know, the, there's time for the administration to react to them and research them, so I'd like to suggest that as each point comes up, if there is any response that we already have, maybe we should respond to that, and then go on to the next. So I'd like to suggest that as each point comes up, if there is any response that we already have, maybe we should respond to that, and then go on to the next point.
Okay.
So on that.
There actually is a way, so I'm thinking perhaps we need to do, for students, or for teachers, excuse me, to mark that. So one of the things perhaps we need to do is just give a little notice to teachers, or a little refresher on how we might do that. The other thing we might need to do is a reminder to students and teachers about the procedures for lessons and how that's supposed to work. And I know that the lesson schedule is noted outside the classrooms. I don't know if it's been shared with teachers yet or not, perhaps it has. But if not, then I would ask the music department just to share the schedule with teachers along with the students who are in those lesson groups. Because that'll help clear up, that'll help. And it may have already been done, I just...
Normally it has, but I...
Can I just ask that you raise your hand? I'm tough, okay. No, I just want to keep it that way, so I don't need to be mean.
My name's Billy Field. I will make sure that tomorrow morning, that all the teachers, I did do it in the middle school, it was not done in the high school, so my apologies for that. All teachers can be given the lesson schedules for myself, Mr. Moment, and Ms. Rain.
And then perhaps Ms. Gleason, you could send out just a reminder to teachers on how to do that. So I think it's just, it's been a long summer, right? People just sometimes need some reminders. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along.
The printers still aren't completely working correctly, right?
Yep.
That's just because they're new, though, right?
Someone starts saying wrong.
May I share?
Yes.
Because this has been a high priority issue. The issue's in the high school library, where the majority of our student work is printed, and you know that from talking to students. The good news is, is with our friend, Mr. Wright, who helps us, we determined what the issue is, and the problem solution will be deployed tomorrow.
Okay.
So all students should be able, then, once this solution is deployed, to print from wherever you are.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for reminding us that that's an important thing.
The buses, so students are having issues getting out of class at three and then gathering their things to go home, and still getting on the bus, because the bus only stays until, like, three oh three sometimes, like that, things like that. And students just have to, like, run from their classes. A lot of students have things like calculus and stuff, last block, where they can't, like, leave a few minutes early or anything like that. So I don't know if there's any way they could just wait until, like, three-ten or something like that, but a lot of students were telling me that.
So thank you for that. I was actually monitoring bus leaving, just because I do it at the beginning of the year. So our buses are scheduled to leave the high school at three oh five. Students will then have five minutes from the end of the last period to gather their things and head to the buses. This week, for the past five days, I've been monitoring it and have noted the departure times between three oh five and three oh seven. So perhaps what we need to do is just remind Mr. Combir, or just check with transportation, see if at least they can wait for three oh five. Part of the challenge is that we print our bus schedules at the beginning of the year with an estimated pickup and drop-off time for each run. For our youngest students, the parent is expected to be there to get them off the bus. So that's one of the considerations that we have, so parents of our younger students expect the bus to be there around the time we tell them, because they have to get them off the bus and to be there to meet them. However, that being said, if a student misses their bus for any reasons, one of three things happens. So maybe students just need to know this, that we've got them, you know, some information. One is, the bus could come back around, that happens sometimes. The student is given a ride home via school van, we help them get home. Oftentimes, it's a nice little opportunity for some of us, or the student elects to get a ride from a parent or other responsible adult. It happens occasionally, it doesn't happen very much. But one of the things I was wondering was if you could maybe let students know that, that if that's a concern, we understand that sometimes that happens, and we're happy to help them if that happens. Our challenge is, we run buses K-12. So our youngest students are often on the bus at two forty, two forty-five, getting ready to come up here. So we appreciate that. I'll follow up with Mr. Combir, though, just to make sure that we are at least giving it till three oh five, which is the time we publish, okay?
Thank you. This was a big one. A lot of students were saying to me, the quality and quantity of lunches have gone down. By quantity, I don't mean there's not enough food. It's just sometimes we'll have, like, pizza and pasta, and then other times it will only be a sandwich or something like that. So could we just make it more, like, even, so some days you are too full, some days you're not too hungry? And then there were complaints about hair and stuff like that. I haven't seen it, but some people were telling me. So maybe just remind them about haircuts and things like that. And then we just need to contact the distributors, because there are a few juice bottles with mold in them. I'm sure that was just a distribution problem.
So thank you. I understand you were the moldy juice person, so... That was unfortunate. I talked to, but fortunately, and we'd like to thank you for contacting Ms. Gleason, so action could be taken when I talked to Mrs. Donenbrody about, she already knew. And so we appreciate that, because then we could do immediate spot checking on the rest of the inventory, because food safety obviously is very important and a big thing. So the juice bottle had a compromised seal, and you're right, it was a distribution and manufacturing defect, and she has followed up with our manufacturer. The hair and the food, Mrs. Donenbrody indicates there's been no increase, however, there are always a few random reports. However, this is a great opportunity to remind everybody about food safety. And in addition, we're going to put some little reminder signs around as well, so that we're mindful of that. So thank you for helping us with that reminder. In terms of the lunch menu, so the quantity is really the quantity of choice. I just want to make sure I have it clear, so I can take that back to her. So it's some days we have good choices of things that will keep us full, some days not so much.
Yeah.
So it's balancing out the menu options.
Yeah, because sometimes it's just, like, too many carbs and things like that, like the pizza and pasta. I just, that one gets.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up with her on that. Regarding lunches in general, though, I'd just like to say, I think there is an interesting opportunity. You already met with Mrs. Donenbrody earlier this week. We still have to follow the required guidelines. So if there are problems with specific food items, I think that information would be shared as far as the principal's cabinet, and you can have a partnership with her, because she's very open to doing the things that she can within the guidelines we have to follow. And I understand you met with her already this week?
Yeah.
The principal's cabinet did. Excellent.
Yeah, we have a cool idea, actually, about having a share table, like they have at the elementary school. And that actually helps one of my other things. People were asking me to look into snack vending machines, but that could help, too, having a share table, that, like, people could go in, in the cafeteria if they're hungry during the day. So that covers that one.
If I may, I don't know if you want to skip around, it's okay, but I got you some more information.
Yeah.
Snack vending machine. The answer, but the answer is yes, that may help, but yes, students still may be interested in vending machines, so here's the parameters. If the machines are accessible during regular school hours, they can only have smart snack compliant items. School hours are the regular school day plus a half hour, so for us, it's up to three-thirty. These items can be available, and students may find that to be helpful. I think it depends on how your snack table works out, or your share table works out. But they also can have vending machines that are accessible after three-thirty, and those can have different items in them. Some schools have both. So again, I'm going to say that the principal's cabinet, take that on as you're monitoring what happens with the share table. And if there's further interest, Mrs. Donenbrody is more than happy to meet with you to make those arrangements. So you have even more options.
Yeah. And a lot of boys are telling me that they want the boys' bathroom door to be closed. They've been complaining about that for years. Just a privacy thing, I guess. And I know there's reasons to why it's not closed, so...
The action of the open boys' bathroom doors was really due to prior incidents of destruction in the bathrooms. We had quite a bit last year. There were broken ceiling tiles, sinks were pulled out of the walls, and there was excessive use of toilet paper and paper towels. So that decision was made as an intention to be a deterrent to further destruction of the bathrooms. It has had that intended effect, but perhaps that's something, again, we could revisit if folks keep the bathrooms in good working order. So, but thank you for that. At least it raises our attention, we can have some conversation about it.
And then just so you guys are aware, some of the events happening in the school, this was Spirit Week, and we had a good turnout. And tomorrow's homecoming and pep rally, and then the homecoming dance on Saturday. So this is, like, my favorite time of high school, everyone gets together. And then I thought this was cool, election markers came into participation in government class, which is for seniors, to register students to vote, even though we're not eighteen yet, so it's, we're in the system. And they taught, like, educated us about how we can vote, how we can stay involved in politics. And then they offered an opportunity to work on Election Day, which I thought was really cool. So just wanted to let you guys know that. And then...
How many, what percentage of these senior classes in every class?
One hundred.
I just wanted to make that clear.
And then scheduling update, we already kind of covered it, but the scheduling committee will be put together soon, so we can touch more on that. And then I talked to Mrs. Lennys about dropping classes. The deadline to change classes was Friday, the twenty-first, so it wasn't that long ago. But if there was a conversation before that day, then changes can still be made to accommodate it. So it was actually later than I thought, so it's good.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Olivia. Okay, moving right along. We are up to business. So I just wanted to let my fellow board members know that the New State School Board Association Annual Convention is upcoming in October, twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh. This year it's going to be in New York City. I would like to go, and if anyone else would like to go, I would encourage them. So it's a great learning experience and also a great networking experience for the board members. So I'm thinking, like, if you could let Patty know by, you know, sometime next week, maybe, and then we could put in our registrations. One thing that goes along with that, which I would like to propose, if it's agreeable, is that since the twenty-fifth is the date of our second meeting in October, if people would be available to moving that meeting to Tuesday, the twenty-third. So that I could, and Scott is also possibly thinking of going to the school board meeting, so that way we could have a hundred percent, hopefully a hundred percent, ten percent board meeting, if that would be agreeable.
It's a can't be here.
Either Tuesday or Thursday. Okay. So that would affect you either way?
Right.
Is that good with everyone else? Chris?
Tuesday, you said the twenty-fifth, or not, the twenty-third, rather, I'm sorry. Oh, in October, yeah, I think that should work.
That's good with you, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that to the twenty-first, that anyone else to go to the dis-boarding, you will not have to just report. I might also indicate that if anyone does go, my sister lives in the loft in Soho, and so accommodations will be lax. Unless you want to give her a tip or something.
I have school events that weekend, so maybe not.
Okay, so like I said, if anyone can go, I'll get in myself, but please let Patty know by next week, so that we can get our registrations out. Finance committee report.
So we met this evening, and there were a few items that we discussed. One item is the investments. If you remember, we talked about moving to some sort of higher interest-bearing savings model. And we have identified one. There's a board resolution that's required, and I want to give you a heads up, that will be coming to the next board meeting for that to be discussed. And there's a resolution and a contract that will be included. It is associated with our current bank, and it's supposed to be fluid transactional electronic thing between some of the money that should affect us. And it is a model that we had previously. It will earn, depending on what time period it will cap, between one point six and one point nine percent interest, compared to our zero-one-two-five percent interest. So we did the calculations on the amount of money that we have sitting there. That's probably up to about forty thousand a year that we would earn just from cash flows that go. So we think it's...
It's the same thing we're dealing with?
It's a program through the same thing.
Is that right?
A different type of...
It's a cooperative, it's called NRT Labs.
Oh, we would be transacting.
All the information is on their website, it's really, everything.
NBT people, actually.
They, I need to use that's the right word, but it's not...
It's not an NBT...
Right, right, right.
Any questions? Okay. So I would entertain any motion to do with...
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, stand. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.